Hole meetings of September ninth, it's well past nine thirty, but we'll continue on. Approval of the agenda.
Resolved that the agenda for the September ninth, two thousand and twenty five Committee of the Hole Meeting be approved as presented.
Mover and Secretary please. Counselor Latham, Deputy Warden Ketchba, all in favor. Motion carries, adoption of the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on August twelfth, two thousand and twenty five be adopted.
Mover and Secretary please. Counselor Jager, Counselor Noble, all in favor. Motion carries. Any disclosure of particular interests? Not seeing any, any members' motions. Going down to reports, six point one, Manager Administrative Services, Deputy Clerk, Elgin County, initiatives to support RIP program.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to County Council. In June, two thousand and twenty five, Council received a delegation from Mr. Nathan McIntyre, the founder of the RIP Current Project, presenting on the significant risks associated with RIP currents in Lake Erie along the beaches and highlighting his ongoing efforts to educate the public to prevent drownings. At this time, Council directed staff to come back with a report about ways that the County of Elgin could assist Mr. McIntyre in amplifying his message. So Administrative Services and Communications, Economic Development and Tourism and Emergency Management got together and came up with several proposed ideas for the consideration of the Committee of the Hole and Council that could be done to assist the RIP Current Project. Now, all of these initiatives were designed to fit within initiatives that are already being done by the County of Elgin so that there wouldn't be too much extra effort and no additional costs. So I'm just going to go through some of the proposed ideas that we talked about and we did, we did discuss these ideas with Mr. McIntyre, and he is also in agreement that these activities would be very helpful. So the first is that the county could help Mr. McIntyre to host a roundtable with Elgin County stakeholders. So staff are recommending that it include key stakeholders from across the county, including municipal and elected officials and staff from shoreline communities, local tourism operators and associations, public health and emergency services, conservation authorities and educational institutions. And it would just serve as a way to get a lot of people around the same table to discuss some approaches to, you know, possibly consistency in signage, educational programming and public awareness. So it would be a way to, that the RIP Current Project could guide their next steps by having everyone around the table. So the county's acting in this way just as a, an agency to help bring together people for the RIP Current Project to discuss their initiatives with. The second would be to use our two thousand and twenty six Elgin County Tour Guide and tourism platforms to assist in raising awareness about RIP currents and their dangers. So the thought was that we produce a tour guide every year at the County of Elgin, and one of the pages could be devoted to safety in the water on Lake Erie beaches. Obviously, beaches are a huge draw for our tourists, so it wouldn't be out of place to put a page in our tour guide that talked about, you know, being safe and knowing the risks of swimming. We would also amplify these messages on our social media platforms and on our tourism website. The third initiative was just advising Mr. McIntyre that we have a grants and sponsorships program available and sending him this information so that he can choose whether he would like to apply to that program or not. Could be used for him to help enhance his promotional efforts and increase his digital presence. The fourth idea was in discussing with emergency management, each year they've been holding a symposium about a different public safety topic. They held one about severe weather in two thousand and twenty four, and when I spoke with emergency management, they had already been discussing, possibly holding one about the broader topic of drowning prevention. So not just RIP currents, but also other, other areas of drowning prevention. So we talked with them, and the idea was that they would dedicate their two thousand and twenty six Symposium to drowning prevention, which would include information and discussion on RIP currents, but also other information about water safety and presentations from experts in water safety and rescue. So these are the four initiatives that staff got together and discussed that would be able to help amplify the message of the RIP Current Project while working within our own, our own existing operations. I would be happy to answer any questions.
After we have resolutions.
Resolved that Council authorized staff to move forward with the initiatives proposed to assist the RIP Current Project in advancing its goals and amplifying its message, as contained in the September ninth, two thousand and twenty five report titled "Elgin County Initiatives to Support RIP Current Project."
Questions or comments? I guess need a mover and secretary first.
Point of order on this. Two of the initiatives I can readily support right away. But how do I put a motion on the table to accept all the initiatives? And then, you understand what I'm getting at?
You don't always have to agree when you make a motion, right?
Usually, Mary, if you move a motion, you're in agreement. Not all of us, because we've seen that. But no, the point I'm trying to make is this is where the structure sometimes gets a little cumbersome. If the warden would permit me, then.
Sure.
But I have to have a motion before I can discuss the content. You see where I'm coming from?
Sure, yeah.
Well, it won't be friendly. Yes, you can.
So Counselor Sloan moves. If I had a second, then we could discuss. Counselor Jager, all in favor?
No. No, we want to have a discussion.
That's right, sorry. Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Deputy.
Thank you. I really like options two and four. And I think if you wanted to do option one, you could feed that into option four. Host your roundtable at the same time as you're doing your emergency preparedness. So that would accomplish two. Option three gives me a little problem because most of the beaches or waterfronts across the county are owned by municipalities, and municipalities are precluded from the funding and grant program. So, and then where we don't have municipal ownership, it's provincially owned. But I'm not sure how option three really ties in very well. I think the county could do very well in living up to its end of the agreement here or to promoting RIP currents and/or awareness of RIP currents by the two initiatives. Options two and a modified option four.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to the Deputy Warden. I think the idea is that basically all events and community programs can apply to the grant and sponsorship program. So it would, it would, the idea that would not be for it to be for actual signage on the beaches, it would be to assist the RIP Current Project in helping to refine their own marketing materials. And it would be at that point that an application would be delivered where it would be up to weighing that application against the eligibility criteria. And then at that point, it would be up to, to Council to approve any sort of funding. It's just, it was an option that was available that we have this program, and we do when people inquire, we send it out.
If I may, so funding for a virtual awareness campaign still could be achieved through the Elgin County Tourism Guide and website. The point I'm trying to get at is even if they want to do something on our municipally-owned beaches, you're still going to go through local councils. I'm not sure that I can support item three.
Counselor Jager.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I have the same suggestions in terms of rolling one into four because I don't think we should take on additional work. We have plenty. As far as number three, I see it as very non-committal. It's really just sending information. I think it's up to the group to then go through the criteria to see if what they have in mind fits, and then it's up to the, to staff to verify the application. So to me, number three is just sending information. It doesn't imply anything at all, so I'm not opposed to it.
Any, Blaine, you got a scowl on.
I've got a puzzled look on my face. Number three is simply advising, but whether we advise the RIP Current Awareness Organization, I'll call them, or not, they can still apply to the county funding program. And if they're eligible, then they'll go through the criteria and that will determine the level of funding to the organization itself, not necessarily to the associated municipality that they may be conducting some of their work in. But whether we do this or not, that organization is eligible to at least apply. So it, it's taking a step on the, on the, on the part of a county just to advise us and as Ms. Thompson alerted Council that if any organization contacts the Council or the county and asks about the program, we provide them the information with respect to the program and the eligibility criteria and whatnot, not knowing or even considering whether or not they'd actually be eligible. So whether step three is taken by county staff or not, the RIP Current Awareness Organization is still eligible to apply if they choose to.
And I guess that Warden, Deputy Warden Ketchba raised the, so a lot of our festivals are on municipal plans, and they apply. So, well.
I would not overthink number three. It's just sending information and then the point, the amendment that I would support is that one be rolled into four and the rest remain.
So mover, secretary are okay with throwing one into four?
Warden, I am not opposed to that.
Thank you for that.
Sorry. The friendly amendment would be to combine items one and four, so to have the roundtable happen at the same time as the symposium.
Any further discussion? Everybody's clear on the friendly amendment? All vote, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Catherine. Moving down to six point two, we have Diana here for our senior planner for draft plan of subdivision three, four, T, MA, two, three, zero, zero, one, Township of Malahide, nine, two, seven, zero, Rogers Road. Go ahead, Diana. You're welcome.
Good morning, Warden and Council. I'm before you this morning to discuss the proposed draft plan of subdivision for lands located at ninety-two seventy Rogers Road in the Township of Malahide. At the Committee of the Hole Meeting held on May twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five, County Council endorsed staff's recommendation of approval of the draft plan of subdivision subject to the conditions found in Appendix F of the staff report. Following the committee meeting and prior to the council meeting for final approval, county planning staff were advised by the Town of Elmer that they wished to comment on the proposed development. Upon the town's review, Elmer identified that the subject lands have the potential for inclusion within the settlement area boundary adjustment discussions between the Township of Malahide and the Town of Elmer. At the time of writing this report, the negotiations between our local municipal partners are ongoing, and the timing of when decision will be made regarding any potential boundary adjustments is unknown. The Planning Act requires approval authorities to make decisions on draft plan of subdivisions within a hundred and twenty days. Since this application has been in review since April, two thousand and twenty-three, a decision is required. The subject lands are located in the suburban area of the Township of Malahide, east of Rogers Road. Lands comprise a total land area of approximately three point four hectares with a hundred and sixty-seven meters of frontage along Rogers Line and are currently vacant. The owners are proposing to develop the subject's lands as an infill residential subdivision, which includes the creation of eleven residential lots with molecular access via new roadway which will intersect with Rogers Road. The proposed is consistent with the provincial planning statement as it is an infill development located within the built-up suburban area within the Township of Malahide. The lands are designated agricultural area within the County of Elgin official plan. It is recognized that certain lands outside of settlement areas have been designated for non-agricultural development by the lower-tier official plans, and these lands are deemed not to be within the prime agricultural area and are subject to the relevant policies of the lower-tier official plan. In stating that, the Township of Malahide designates the lands a suburban area where new development is directed to allow for infill and growth. A zoning bylaw amendment application was required to rezone the subject lands from small lot agricultural holding to rural residential and open space. The holding provision prohibits development until a subdivision agreement has been registered on the lands. The zoning bylaw amendment was approved by Township of Malahide Council on May first, two thousand and twenty-five, as well as a resolution of support for the draft plan of subdivision subject to County Council's approval. County staff have reviewed the subject applications under the requirements of the Planning Act, the provincial planning statement, county official plan, and the Township of Malahide official plan, and as stated, are satisfied that the application meets all relevant requirements. Therefore, staff's recommendation, sorry, staff recommends approval of draft plan of subdivision thirty-four, T, dash, MA, two, three, zero, zero, one, subject to the conditions in Appendix F of the staff report. Thank you and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Diana. Your resolution, please.
Resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin grants draft plan approval to draft plan of subdivision thirty-four, T, MA, twenty-three, zero, zero, one, Township of Malahide, nine, two, seven, zero, Rogers Road by Strict Baldinelli Moniz Limited on behalf of Peter and Anita Weeb, dated November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and that staff be directed to provide notice of decision subject to the conditions of final approval in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act.
Mover and secretary please. Counselor Whitner, Counselor Jager. Questions or comments? Counselor Cookett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. On this, basically just a, just a comment. I'd like to start off by appreciating the cooperation of the county and Malahide, I think, in terms of looking at the future of this area. Elmer Council, as you're aware, had requested a deferral for a number of reasons, which I'm not going to go into here. We appreciate at this point the opportunity to provide input on this draft approval. While this matter falls outside the scope of this report, pretty much, it is our understanding that both Malahide and Elgin County intend to include a clause in the final subdivision agreement that would allow for the transfer of rights to the Town of Elmer should a ministerial order be issued transferring these lands into the town's jurisdiction. So it's a matter of writing something in the subdivision report that allows for whatever rights were attributed to, whatever rights Malahide had would be transferred to the Town of Elmer if, you know, the boundary adjustment were successful. I'm raising the point now as we believe it is everybody's best interest to establish a clear process for administering the subdivision agreement in the event that a boundary adjustment occurs. Given the potential for such an adjustment, this file is somewhat unique, I guess. The Town of Elmer is grateful for the collaborative approach taken by all parties to ensure a smooth transition should a transfer take place. So just a comment for understanding of council.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Call the vote, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Diana.
Thank you.
Moving down to Director of Engineering Services, Roundabout Landscaping. Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to the rest of County Council. The County of Elgin constructed its first roundabout at the intersection of Elm Line and Centennial Road in two thousand and twenty-three. At the August third, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, County Council directed staff to restore the center island with a native pollinator hydroseed mix. This was a low-cost, low-maintenance solution, and it was effective at establishing ground cover over the island. However, it was not well-received by the public, who felt that the restoration treatment appeared to be incomplete and wasn't as aesthetically pleasing as other roundabouts seen in the city of St. Thomas. Council has now requested staff to present other options for landscaping at this center island intersection, and I've presented a few for council's deliberation today. The first one would be the status quo. This would be the simplest and the least expensive solution. The vegetation was cut down earlier this summer, and it has created a uniform ground cover. There are remnants of wildflowers and weeds and grass that is covered over the center island, and no complaints have been received since this has been cut. There is an ongoing annual maintenance cost of approximately twenty-five hundred dollars to cut this down annually. Another option for council to consider is a decorative garden with plantings, and this is a relatively common roundabout medium treatment used by many municipalities. The garden would consist of placed topsoil and a thick bed of mulch as well as native plant varieties. This option would require periodic maintenance, and an estimated budget would be fifty thousand dollars plus an annual maintenance cost of five thousand dollars annually. Next would be artificial turf. This would be a maintenance-free solution, and it's gaining popularity. Our colleagues in Essex County has actually have three of these in artificial turf. They've been well-received. I've personally viewed a couple of them, and they do look attractive. The turf is expected to have a fifteen-year service life, and it's estimated to cost sixty thousand dollars. Finally, an option exists to produce an artistic structure at the center roundabout island. This has become quite common throughout the city of St. Thomas. If council would like to explore this solution, a preliminary project budget of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be recommended based on the city of St. Thomas's experience with their center island restorations. Staff would also recommend that a subcommittee of council be established to prepare and approve an RFP for securing an artist for the feature. An annual maintenance of the feature and the surroundings would also be necessary. The project cost to implement council's preferred solution would be included in the two thousand and twenty-six budget and be implemented during the twenty-six construction season. This report provides four options. There are many others, and staff seeks direction from council on how to proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Need a mover and secretary to start.
Resolved that the report titled "Roundabout Landscaping Options" from the Director of Engineering Services dated September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five be received and filed, and that council provide direction with respect to its preferred landscaping option for inclusion in the two thousand and twenty-six budget for implementation.
Thank you. I guess I'll start this one. So I guess when this was initia, oh, sorry. Need mover and secretary, please. Yeah. Counselor Noble, Counselor Whitner. So I, I saw, so I was hearing this project started the first time, and I guess, and maybe it's a misunderstanding, but I was part of the committee that suggested this, and I kind of got the impression that it would have been more like option two that Peter's presenting now than what we ended up with. That being said, that's still probably the one I prefer would be option two, but I'll open up the floor for comments. Counselor Noble, go ahead.
Through you, Warden. The astroturf option, there's no maintenance on that for fifteen years, so you don't need to worry about somebody trying to get into the roundabout to maintain it. There's no cost to maintain it. It's kind of a safer option, possibly.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Noble. That was the experience of Essex County, who have these roundabouts on busier thoroughfares, and that was their, their preferred benefit from the astroturf solution. Its cost is because there's a thick layer of limestone bedding that is laid down prior to the turf for its longevity. So garbage would still need to be cleaned up, but that's part of the RMA and the municipality's responsibility. And if there was a collision of sorts or a vehicle errant into the roundabout, there would obviously be damage that would have to be rectified. Otherwise, the turf is expected to last maintenance-free for a warranted period of fifteen years, yes.
Any other questions, Counselor Sloan?
Just sort of speaking with the deputy warden as well, and I'm, if it's of any interest, you know, the cutting of the lawn, I appreciate what the county did ultimately for the natural garden, and it wasn't anyone's idea that the neighbors would think it was sort of, it didn't look neat and clean. So we've made it neat and clean, and I'm happy with it being maintained as the lawn cut. But as I said to the deputy warden, maybe there's an opportunity in the next six or eight months that we'll find a sponsor or a charity that Central Elgin can work with to put something in the middle. But I wouldn't expect my colleagues here to, I don't think at this point, we appreciate the roundabout very much, and if I could suggest that we'd like to do whatever we could to, to help, and if us cutting that ourselves or with respect to the county being a partner for twenty-five hundred dollars, that would be fine with me.
Any other questions or? Counselor Hance, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My experience with wildflowers and grasses is they take time, sometimes a number of years to get where you want them, because in the meantime, weeds take over. And I guess I have a question as well for Peter. Is, is there an issue in safety where the entire trip around a roundabout is obscured in the middle?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Hance, and that was a concern received by the public. They not only had comments in regards to their perceived unsightliness of what it appeared, but they perceived it as also being a safety issue. Roundabouts are purposely mounted and constructed to obscure sightlines across the roundabout so you're not, especially at night, you don't see those headlights right on you and moving around. When you enter a roundabout, driver's only obligation is to look left. And so if vegetation obscured sightlines across the roundabout, that is not a safety concern.
Okay, thank you for that. And just further comments. Twenty-five hundred dollars is minimal, and keep it natural would be my preference. A manicured lawn is acceptable, I think.
Any other, Counselor Whitner, go ahead.
Warden, this through to Peter. These artistic things we're putting up, they look nice, but they're expensive. They do tend to block the view. I don't like them personally because it blocks the view, but that's just me. Would there be an option for some like colored gravel put in where they, I'm sure like the New York Falls, they do some really beautiful things with gravel, which below maintenance have to put it in? I mean, the grass cutting it is what it is, but there'd be some maintenance to the gravel, I understand that, but, yeah. Well, the only reason we're putting these artistic things in is just for the artistic reason, it's not to block view personally, or?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Whitner. The artistic structure is meant to differentiate municipalities and promote maybe that area. The city of St. Thomas's has done a terrific job in promoting their history in some of these locations or nearby facilities. So that would be the primary purpose of the artistic structure. It's not necessarily meant to block cross viewing.
So somebody like to put something on the floor? Deputy Warden?
Mr. Warden, I tend to agree with the status quo, and should the opportunity arise in the future of some sponsor or somebody coming forward to amend it and move to enhance it, so to speak, I think council would be had, take the opportunity at that time to change it. But I'm thinking at this point, I'll put a amendment on the motion to accept option one.
Sorry, Counselor Sloan, seconds?
We need a, it's not friendly, so we're going to have to vote the amendment, aren't we? That's the point, yeah. But we don't want to be friendly.
But we don't want to be friendly.
So, uh, well, uh, Councillor Noble and Councillor Whitner, would you? Councillor Noble and Councillor Whitner, will you accept the amendment? Yep, both of us accept. And I'll sure, go ahead, yeah.
So resolved that the report titled "Roundabout Landscaping Options From the Director of Engineering Services", dated September ninth, twenty twenty-five, be received and filed, and that staff proceed with option one to cut the roundabout annually and maintain the status quo.
And that's duly moved and seconded. Any further comments? Councillor Zegar?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, so I think this is still new for this area, and I think there's still a lot of, uh, learning to do because my understanding was that it was in fact beneficial to have, to not have a flat, wide-open. Uh, that defeats the, the purpose of a roundabout because a roundabout is trying to prevent drivers from missing the intersection and driving right through. So when you have decorative flowers or artistic, um, you know, displays, it actually, uh, if somebody does miss the intersection and goes right through, then there's something stopping them, and it reduces injuries, and so that's what I had read about roundabouts. So I'm not trying to settle that debate right now. Um, I think what I'm saying is that we need more education as we continue to install these, including education about what it takes to implement, uh, a natural grass. I think that lacked, we lacked education in that area too, because we should have, uh, managed expectations that it takes at least three years, and it takes reseeding and takes a little bit of maintenance to establish. Once it's established, natural grasses and flowers could have worked, um, and it could have been a win-win-win. Um, but we are where we are, and so all that, I will strongly, strongly encourage then if we are doing just grass, um, our colleagues in Central Elgin to find a sponsor and to beautify that area, so not only for beauty, but for safety purposes. Thank you.
Okay, we're, we're starting to get punchy already. I'll call the vote, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you, Peter. And I guess, uh, Peter has the next one as well, uh, routine emergency maintenance, uh, services for traffic control lights. Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This report details an RFP that was issued to provide routine and emergency maintenance services for traffic-controlled signals, and we seek council's approval to award the contract. The county has a number of traffic signals, intersection, beacons, roadway illumination, pedestrian crossovers on its roadways. The primary, primary objective of, of the RFP was to secure a single servicing contractor to provide annual maintenance and emergency response services to the county's electrical service. The contractor selected by the evaluation committee is Guild Electric Limited. For their proposed, uh, bid, they scored the highest bid technically, and they also provided the lowest cost. Guild Electric is also the county's current electrical services contractor and has been provided, providing the service for more than a decade. The total cost is estimated at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for a three-year term. The contract amount is actually based on the number of service hours and equipment, uh, used. It's an estimate derived on the last three years of experience, so that value will change. And, uh, therefore, the report's for you to recommend Guild Electric continue, to continue on and award the contract for them.
Thank you, Peter. Go ahead, Catherine.
Resolved that the contract for a routine, routine and emergency maintenance services for traffic control signals, request for proposal twenty twenty-five P nine be awarded to Guild Electric Limited for a three-year term in the estimated amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand forty-five dollars excluding HST, and that staff be authorized to extend the contract for an additional three years, subject to satisfactory contractor performance reviews and satisfactory pricing for the renewal term, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be directed and authorized to sign the contract.
Thank you. Mover and sec, please. Councillor Sloan, Councillor Noble. Um, any questions or comments? I, I guess you heard that, uh, the one at forty-five and, and Talbot, your finger all got clobbered again. It's only, it was an operating about a month, yeah.
Sorry, Warden, was that Dr. Beg?
I'm not sure who hit it. Uh, somebody, uh, went through the intersection, didn't stop or didn't, didn't look left, no, right, I guess, and, uh, hit the car that directed the car into the pole and then flipped it over. Uh, I didn't hear about any dog.
Sorry.
Anyway, that's, that's becoming too cur, uh, common of, of a problem area down there, but, uh, go ahead, Peter.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just for council's information, when these occurrences do occur, we, we do our best to try to recoup costs. It does take considerable amount of time. Once we receive the police collision report, we follow up with the insurer and, and attempt to recoup the costs for these, uh, assets that, that have been damaged.
Oh, that's good. It's, th- those big, uh, that's a big pole. It was a twelve-inch pole that got snapped right off, and that, that must have been one heck of a wallop, but anyway. Any further questions on this? All in favor, please? Motion carries. Thanks, Peter. Oh, I guess, uh, Peter's got one more. Go ahead, uh, Village of Fingle reconstruction contract board. Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of County Council. The twenty twenty-six capital budget, uh, advertised tenders for the reconstruction of Union Road, Fingle Line, Fowler Street, and Mill Park Street in the Village of Fingle. This is a partnership between the County of Elgin and the Township of Southhold. The county is responsible for Union Road and Fingle Line through the Village of Fingle, along with their associated stormwater systems. The Southhold is responsible for the sanitary, the water systems within the village, as well as all infrastructure on local roads and pedestrian facilities. Fingle is preparing for an anticipated nine hundred and ninety-two housing units across a number of developments, and the county has been working with the Township of Southhold together with their consultant, who is ACOM, as the consulting engineer for this project. A total of twenty contractors downloaded the tender documents, and six qualified contractors submitted bids. That table's on the bottom of page eighty-one for, for council's information, and this closed last week on September the third. Briex Construction submitted the lowest compliant bid for eighteen point nine eight five million dollars. The project is being funded partially by the Ministry of Infrastructure with two separate deadlines. One for sanitary works, which must be completed in December fourth, by December fourth of twenty twenty-six, and then the remainder of the work has to be completed by December third, twenty twenty-seven, to meet all senior government funding requirements. The county's portion of this construction cost is approximately ten point four million dollars, of which the Ministry of Infrastructure, through our successful funding grant application, is funding three point seven million dollars. The stormwater system designed through this project has been purposely, um, designed to accommodate post-development flows from the multiple, multiple development parcels throughout the village for the benefit of the township and the development, uh, partners. The solution increases the size of the stormwater systems on county roads and increases those construction costs for those assets. The county will be front-ending these additional costs and expects to recoup these funds from the Township of Southhold through, um, uh, developers, through their development agreements as the township enters, uh, um, agreements with developers of these sites over the next few years. Therefore, the total project costs are anticipated to be lower. However, that value has not yet been finalized or calculated. It should also be noted that the consultant, uh, the consultant's construction, inspection, and administrative costs have also increased. They've increased from approximately four hundred thousand dollars to eight hundred thousand dollars, now that the project's scope is fully understood, now that it's been designed, and that the construction schedule has been developed to fulfill senior government funding, uh, um, timelines. There's extensive and ongoing consultation that has been taking place between the county and the Township of Southhold with this partnership project. The county and township are also planning to host a public information center meeting. This is planned for September twenty-fourth, and the township will be hosting it at their township office in the Village of Fingle. The county, uh, and township, uh, are also developing cooperatively a project website, and this will be hosted on the Engage Elgin, uh, platform, and this will, uh, be available so that all stakeholders will be kept up to date on all the project developments. Staff recommends the project award to the lowest bidder Briex Construction. The work is proposed to be scheduled, uh, to begin as, as quick as this October to start meeting these deadlines, which are very tight, and substantial completion is expected to be achieved by December third, twenty twenty-seven. Be pleased to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Go ahead, Catherine.
Resolved that Briex Construction Incorporated be selected to complete the Village of Fingle Reconstruction Project, tender number twenty twenty-five T thirty-two at a total price of eighteen million nine hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-nine cents, inclusive of a one point five million dollar contingency allowance and exclusive of HST, and that approval of the contract be subject to the Township of Southhold's approval of their portion of the project, project costs, and that the warden and chief administrative officer clerk be directed and authorized to sign the contract.
Mover and sec, please. Councillor Latham? Councillor Noble? Uh, first, I, I'd like to thank Peter for being open-minded to the concept of, uh, one stormwater pond for the whole village. Uh, it's, uh, unique, I guess, and, and, uh, it's going to benefit Fingle a lot. Uh, Southhold Township, uh, with one pond that'll be naturalized and part of the community park and for, uh, kids to play around and view the nature, and, uh, thank you for being open to that concept. And it looks like we have majority of developers have understood that they'll get to build a couple of extra homes because of it, because they aren't using up land for a pond. But anyway, I'll open up to questions or comments from council members? Seeing no questions, comments, call the vote, all in favor? Motion carries. Thanks, Peter. And down to adjournment.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at eleven forty AM to meet again on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at nine thirty AM.
Mover and sec, please. Councillor Whitner, Councillor Cookett, all in favor? Motion carries.